Hi, I'm Dr. Renee Turchi, Plymouth White Marsh High School Distinguished Graduate and pediatrician at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, and you're watching CITV.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Colonial School District's Business Meeting for the Board of Directors for October 2018. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the Board met an executive session this evening. Prior to this meeting, we discussed this evening's personnel report, confidential legal matters. The meeting lasted about an hour. And before we begin the meeting tonight, just real quick, the fall weather has set in. Halloween is next week, so we just hope everyone is safe, all our children out there trick-or-treating, have a safe and fun time. I'm going to ask Dave Sherman to put some websites up there to give us some tips on safe trick-or-treating, going to a group, flashlight, and some other great things and advice for families. So moving forward, we go to recognitions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite Dr. Picani to the podium so we can recognize our National Merit Scholar semifinalists, National Merit Commended Scholars, and our AP Scholars. We have much to be proud of, some wonderful accolades. Dr. Picani?
Big group here. Had to line them up like third graders. Thank you, Dr. Christian, and the Colonial School Board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present some of our Plymouth White Marsh High School seniors for their outstanding academic achievements. At PW, we pride ourselves on our Advanced Placement Program. We offer more advanced placement courses than most public and private high schools in the region. Last May, 317 PW students participated in 606 exams. An astounding 80 percent of those students earned a score of three or above. Thirty-four percent were named AP Scholars by the College Board. Four times in the past five years, PW has had at least 100 AP Scholars. I'd like to say that this is the most we've ever had, 107 total AP Scholars this past school year, so it's a big round of applause for many of the students to my right and overall. They're so busy, I had, it took me forever calling them down, connect messages and phone calls to have them here. They're such busy students, so I appreciate many of them being here this evening. There are 35 total members of our current senior class who are among the AP Scholars. I'd like to present and recognize some of the students to you at this moment. The seniors to my right are not only outstanding students. In the classroom, they're highly active with clubs, service learning, student athletes, musicians, artists, and leaders within our building, so quite proud of all of them. To begin, we have 12 current seniors who were named AP Scholars, some of here this evening. To be named an AP Scholar, a student must score three or above on three or more exams. AP Scholars in the class of 2019 include Keegan Gallagher. This is the fun part. David Garcia, School Board rep as well. Sidney Malillo.
Of course.
Julia Oshewski. Felix Raymundo. And we have a few AP Scholars who are not present this evening. They had prior commitments. Emily Hong, Julie Kaplan, Ainsley Nugent, Andrew Strickland, and Elena Alvarez. I'd like to congratulate them as well. We have 14 current seniors who were named AP Scholars with honor. Scholars with honor must average at least a 3.25 on all AP exams taken and a three or higher on four or more exams. AP Scholars with honor in the class of 2019 include David Rucker. Owen Butler. Julian Connor. Emma Feokavitz. Ava Rosen. And Kara Waite. Two additional students who are not present this evening, Ethan Tren and Rebecca Richards. I'd like to congratulate them as well for their accomplishment. There's one member of the class of 2018, Savannah Goldstein, who was named an Advanced Placement National Scholar. National Scholars must receive an average of four or above on all exams taken or four or higher on eight or more exams, and I'd like to congratulate Savannah, who's off at college, and she's one of our AP National Scholars. Give her a round of applause as well. In the past 10 years, PW has had 908 AP Scholars, including 257 Scholars with Distinction and 19 AP Scholars. It's not only a testament to our students, but also the staff, and we do have a few staff members I'd like to recognize to walk around and congratulate them as well. Mr. Marcus, Mr. Slegel, Ms. Penner, I think they're in the crowd. Come on, come on up, if you could. AP teachers are extremely busy this evening as well, but they are representing the group, so I'd like to congratulate our teachers here today, representing our AP team. Nine members of the class of 2019 have been named AP Scholars with Distinction. Scholars with Distinction must average at least a 3.5 on all AP exams taken and are three or above on five or more exams. Same thing when I read that, I looked at the list. AP Scholars with Distinction in the class of 2019 include Golzar Burdemurtova. Adam Friedman. Allison Helferdy. Alex Pruski. Straight from the pole, I'm sure, Justin Ruggiero. Namita Rayo. Anna Schick. And Kendra C. Two members of the class of 2019 have been recognized as National Merit Commended Scholars. These students scored among the top 50,000 or 3% of the more than 1.6 million students nationwide who entered the 2018 competition by taking the 2018 PSATs and the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Our National Merit Commended Scholars are Devon Moore, and Devon is also an AP Scholar with Honor. Serena Smith. Serena is also an AP Scholar and a National Merit. Congratulations. Three members of the class of 2019 are National Merit semifinalists. These students will be considered for some 7,500 National Merit Scholarships, worth more than $32 million. They'll be offered next spring. National Merit semifinalists scored higher than less than 1% of the more than 1.6 million students nationwide who took the 2016 PSATs. Our National Merit semifinalists include Spencer Berg, who is also an AP Scholar with Honor. Hannah Kenworthy. She's also an AP Scholar with Honor. And finally, Derek Dom, who is also an AP Scholar with Distinction. Congratulations to our AP Scholars who are National Merit. Students commended and semifinalists, quite an accomplishment. And I believe the fun part, Mr. Sherman wants a photo, am I correct? He did not. Is it okay? All right. Seniors can come on up for a quick photo out in front of the school board. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman, we're going to let you take your picture first, and then we're going to allow any parents that would like to take a picture to have that opportunity. So, Mr. Sherman, go first. All right, let the parents get a photo. What do you think? It's always impressive when you have students like that, so gifted, so talented, really apply themselves. It's, it makes all this hard work definitely worth doing. So, on the Board, from the Board, I gotta say, we're very appreciative of all our teachers and the hard work and the dedication they do with these students. Moving forward, we're going to approval of the minutes. We have FMT Committee Minutes from 8:13-18. Community Relations, Student Safety, that's from 9:25-18. FMT Committee Minutes from 10:01-18. The Board Business Meeting from 9:20-18. Finance Committee from 10:01-18. Policy Committee from 10:15-2018. And Curriculum Meeting from 9:25-2018. Do I hear a motion? I make that in a motion here, a second for the approval of the minutes. And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. All right, moving forward. Financial reports. Approval of the financial reports for this month include food service invoice check registered, food service profit and loss for all the schools, cash flow summary, Treasurers Report, reconciliation of cash accounts, budgetary deficit status report, bond fund, food service profit and loss, outstanding investment report, comparison of taxes collected, trust fund, trust fund report, and capital reserves. Make that in the form of a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions on financial reports, hear or not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Treasurers Report. We have, may I make a motion for the acceptance of the Treasurers Report for September 2018? Here a second. Any discussion? Hear or none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. And as part of the meeting, we have opportunity for the public comments on the agenda. I'll open up the mic. Is there any comment? All right, hear or none. Move forward to Staff Reports. Superintendent Report.
There's no staff report tonight, so we'll go directly into the Superintendent's Report. We have a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Extracurricular Contracts as outlined in 10B and 10C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
Do I hear a motion for accepting the Superintendent's Report? Motion, a second, a second. Any discussion? Hear or none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Student Representatives.
Hi, we have our report tonight. We're going to start with PW. The first week of October, we had our homecoming week, and students displayed their school spirit by dressing up according to each theme day and attended exciting team-building events like Color Wars and Powder Puff each evening. We wrapped up the week with a festive all-school costume dance, which was really fun, and thank you to CES for letting us have our dance there. Our gym wasn't ready yet. Last week, PW held parent-teacher conferences, and I'll pass it on to David.
Yeah, so for the past few weeks, sports, the fall sports, the regular season's kind of wrapping up, and most teams are having their senior nights to kind of honor their teammates' final season. Volleyball and field hockey teams won the division title, and will move on to playoffs this week. They're actually playing in the new gym on Wednesday, I think, and the new gym's opening up to volleyball and basketball teams. There was ribbon ceremony, ribbon-cutting ceremony tonight, as you guys know. So, everyone's super excited about that. And also, Minithon is starting to make a big presence in the high school. There's this thing called Thon Thursday, where students go around in camp for about 60 seconds, collecting money, spare change, stuff like that, and it's just a nice way to raise money. PW Cancer Awareness Club is selling pink shirts in honor of this month, which is Brands' Cancer Awareness Month. And then, this Thursday, October 25th, PW will host the Colonial Safe Schools Night, and this event will inform parents about the district schools and how they maintain a safe and secure environment for students and staff. Pass back to Maggie.
Next Tuesday, October 30th, the PW National Honor Society will induct new members into the organization and honor returning seniors. Students are recognized for their character, scholarship, leadership, and service. Next Thursday, November 1st, PW will host Villanova University's Director of Financial Assistance to discuss the financial aid process, because many seniors are starting to apply to college, and juniors are also thinking about it.
And on November 6th, the Tuesday, students will have off for Election Day. Eighteen-year-old students at PW have also been given the opportunity to register to vote during lunches at the start of the month, so we're really hoping to see some first-time voters to visit the polls this week, and we encourage parents and staff to vote in the midterm elections. And so, the next report's for CES, the school. A quick recap for September that maybe we left out or might have missed. The music department had an orientation for parents, kind of explaining all the opportunities students have here at CES for music, and there were also two open houses on the 17th and the 24th, which were super well-attended. Parents got to see the school, meet teachers, and learn about the GAF Initiative, which was Google Apps for Education. And then, the PTO organized an ice cream social and a book fair night on September 27th, which was really nice for all the students and staff and parents to come out and just, very friendly time. And in October, there was a Benchmark Assessment System testing, which kind of, like, was completed this month, and that's to help students' individual instructional needs, just to kind of see where students are at and see what they need more help on for the school to focus on. And there were also gain groups for math and ELA. These groups were for targeted instruction, and it's just one of the many ways that the schools in our district are working to ensure students are getting the most out of their education. The school improvement team at CES met several times, kind of reevaluate the goals they had for the upcoming year, and so team members began identifying strengths and weaknesses they had, and in the school climate, student achievement, and they were trying to discover the root causes and areas of need. The student improvement team's plan was completed on October 15th and submitted to the district office. The climate team at CES met on October 5th. They discussed new approaches to classroom management. There were plans to enhance the school's sense of community in classrooms and just throughout the school in general. And then, they, there was also solidified plans for the National Bullying Prevention Month, and on October 1st, CES held its first trailblazer event of the year. Students enjoyed the time of dance, and then the two principals at CES actually DJed it, which is funny. CES cares team collected-
I have to chime in. It's DJ Razy Rocks-
Oh, my gosh.
And Funky Phillips, and DJ Funky Phillips. They have a name. That's me.
The CES cares team collected donations for Rachel's Way project this month. Students and staffs were encouraged to donate any amount of food to just benefit Rachel's Way Food Bank, which is at the Plymouth Meeting Mall and at Ridge Park, or actually, also at CES. There was an info session, or there will be an info session on October 30th to kind of help in parents who are dealing with stress and anxiety with their children. So, like I said, Tuesday, October 20th, at CES. October 30th, sorry. So, on to Ridge Park. Ridge Park has monthly character traits, so each month they work on character traits. So, this month for October, it's respect. And each week, they recognize a student from each grade with a power paw, and then these students are recognized for going above and beyond in some way with a classmate, staff member, or school community. Students are celebrated with their name written on the announcements, and they receive a medal. And then, just like CES, there was also an ice cream social this month on one of the Fridays, and they had a pizza party to wrap up the week. Lastly, they are having their book fairs, which was why they had the pizza night, to support the school's book fair, and local firefighters came and spoke to Ridge Park students about fire prevention. I'll pass the mic to Maggie.
Okay, I have Plymouth Elementary. On October 3rd, students enjoyed an assembly presented by the National Theater for Children. Conservation Caper discussed the science of energy, energy efficiency, and ways to conserve energy. On October 12th, the PE PTO hosted their ice cream social for the families of Plymouth. Everyone enjoyed the ice cream and the opportunity to socialize with staff members and other families with the dance party in the gym. Students at PE are participating in a new community outreach and reading incentive program in cooperation with Outback Steakhouse. Students are challenged to read 15 minutes each night and complete a reading log, and then students can exchange their completed reading log for a bookmark that allows them to receive a free kids' meal at Outback in Concha Hockin. And the winning classroom, the classroom that has the most completed reading logs by December 1st, will win a catered lunch from Outback in their classroom. Also, at Concha Hockin Elementary, this month they had a book fair, and White Marsh Elementary also had a book fair, and all the elementary schools will have their fall parade and celebration on October 31st. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent job on including the whole district. All right, moving forward into new business. Jen?
Motion to approve revisions to Board Policies 249, bullying, cyberbullying, 103.1, non-discrimination qualified students with disabilities, 104, non-discrimination in employment practices, 105, curriculum, 105.1, review of instructional materials by parents, guardians, and students on a second-read basis.
You make that in the form of a motion? And do I have a second? We have a second. Any discussion on the policies that were now up for second read? All right, hear or none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Okay. Jen, again, first read.
Motion to approve Board Policies 103, non-discrimination in school and classroom practices, 105.2, exemption from instruction, 106, guides for planned instruction, 107, adoption of planned instruction, 108, adoption of textbooks, 109, resource materials, 110, instructional supplies, and 111, lesson plans on a first-read basis.
All right, and that's in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? Do you have a second? Any discussion? Do you want to recap any of them? Not at this point. Okay. All in favor, say aye for first read.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Moving forward. School Calendar. Rosemary?
Board Direction is requested regarding the proposed start date of the 2019-2020 school year. The administration recommends that September 3rd be approved as the first day of school. Motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hear or none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Leslie, out of State Trips?
Yes. This is a motion to approve students from the Plymouth White Marsh High School Marine Science Class to visit the Adventure Aquarium in Camden, New Jersey on November 13th, 2018.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Eunice?
Motion to approve the contracted bus drivers as outlined in the attached memo from Kathy Ellis dated September 27th, 2018.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Adam?
Item F on the agenda is a motion to amend the listing of-
Item F on the agenda is a motion to amend the listing of investment bank depositories to include Fulton Bank and Victory Bank.
All right, is there a second on that motion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Knees? Ayes have it. Adam?
And item G on the agenda is a motion to approve the certification of a board resolution authorizing the board treasurer to file applications, open new accounts, and certify various documents.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Knees? Ayes have it. All right, completes new business. On to solicitors report.
I would like, I have something-
You have an item for new business?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to make a motion to add as a new item to the agenda, the PSBA Principles for Governance and Leadership. I realize that it was the intention of the board, it is the intention of the board, to wait until January to do this. And I believe that we can do it more formally if we choose to again in January. But I think that it's very imperative right now, as a board, that we show the public that we believe in these principles. I can read them. I don't know how that goes, and I don't know if I have a second to do that this evening. And I'm not sure how to do that, Mr. Solicitor, to add it to the agenda. Do we need a second to add it to the agenda?
You can make the motion. If there's a second, it can be added. It's important that you have public comment before any agenda items.
Okay, thank you. So as a motion, I'm making that we do it this evening, and if we see fit, we do it again. I don't care if we do it every month. I just think it's important that it's something that we need to put out there right now as soon as possible.
Last second, ma'am.
So we have public comment. We want to make sure that the process is done correctly, so just real- So we have a motion with a second. Any board discussion on this item? I'd like to start off with the board discussion. And Sue, I agree with you that the full intent of this board is to pass this as a resolution. Because it was initially presented through PSBA during our policy revisions to, it was initially proposed from PSBA as a policy. And it doesn't read as a policy. And so, amongst discussion, among with Jen and Dr. Christian and fellow board members, it was decided to move it as a resolution. A resolution allows us more flexibility because you heard from our policy committee meeting that adopting it as a policy locks you in to what the current state of that policy would be, where we would have to go through a two-month recycle review process if we ever got updated. So we are moving forward with a resolution. And the intent is to have this resolution in January. Read every January from here on out. And I say this because the work that we're doing in policy is the framework for future boards, not only this board but future boards. And so that they don't have to go through this very exhaustive process of policy review. As you well-known, much of our policy was original from 1965, like thirty percent of our policy. And another thirty percent was twenty-plus years old. So we're going through this very long and extensive process in an open forum with lots of discussion, robust discussion at times. So there's no, the reason is for January, and it goes to one of the other reasons we discussed earlier, is that traditionally, December, well, every December, we reorg, we have a reorganizational meeting. And at that time, every other year, there's new members possibly joining the board.
Right.
So the thought was that every January moving forward be the first official meeting where we would adopt that resolution. And it co-aside's with school board recognition. So it's a month for school boards to be recognized for all their hard work, and at the same time, we can adopt this resolution.
And I-
Adopting it tonight is, it doesn't have to, and again, this is all symbolic. It says, there's no legal teeth to this resolution. So it's a symbolic and it's a nice gesture. I agree with you, and I think it's a much-needed gesture. But to rush to it tonight, throw it on the back end of the new business agenda without actually reading it and going through it at a policy committee meeting, isn't doing it justice.
I-
And I think that we, as a board, should talk about it, maybe self-examination, and then, you know, come January, we adopt it the way it's supposed to be. And even with that, PSBA sells the resolution on a large cardboard poster that we all can sign off onto it, and we can hang it wherever. I was talking to Dr. Christian. Some of his former boards keep it in their superintendent's boardroom. Prior to a meeting, they come out, they touch it on the way out the door. I think that's a nice, kind of a game day feel to it. But I think that we can do so much more with it than just to do it tonight and then turn around and do it again in a couple of months. And I think it does it injustice to rush to it tonight.
I disagree to some of the things you're saying. Number one, I believe that there is no reason we can't do it again in January with more fanfare, with the poster that PSBA wants us to sign. But I believe that it is imperative right now that this board, because of the issues that have been raised by the public, that we make it very clear to the public as a whole that we believe in the principles of this. And I, you know, I'm making that motion. I think it's important. I think that the public, it would be a small gesture showing that this board is very, very sincere about believing in these parameters. So I understand why you want to wait till January. I don't see any harm in doing it both tonight and in January.
Has this policy been around for a while? Is this resolution been around for a while? Is this something that PSBA just came up with recently? Anybody think it's been around?
I think it's been around for a while.
Like years? Or months?
I feel like we've-
Years.
Yeah, I feel like we've approved this before. Yeah.
We did approve it in the past.
I just think what Sue's point is, there is a lot of members of our community who have been frustrated. And we're trying to do our best as a board to calm those frustrations and by working together and doing as much as we can together. And I think this is just a, and this is why I asked about this at the last policy meeting. I mean, I agree, in January, it's a great idea. But I asked for this months ago. I wanted this months ago. I've asked for a board self-assessment for the last nine months, and that still hasn't happened. I think that we, I think that our leadership should encourage us to do this as a board and to show and say out loud these things. And Sue didn't read them out loud, but they're all the most amazing things that I know all nine of us truly believe in. So let's just say it out loud, and let's say it now, and let's say it proudly, and move forward. And then in January, we can have the poster and do hoopla. And every January from then.
I agree with you that this board is definitely in favor of adopting this resolution. I have to disagree with you on the method that you're choosing to do it tonight. I just respectfully disagree. And that's okay. We can, you know, we both want to get there. It's just how we get there. And I think that holding off until January actually is going to represent a more symbolic gesture to everyone involved.
I could not disagree more.
And if anyone would like, I can read it. But I think that this isn't the first time that this board has added something to an agenda without lengthy conversation. And I think that this is important enough that we do it this evening.
Well, and again, that's, and you're entitled to your point of view, and I fully respect that point of view. But I think it will be better served for all of us if we do it the correct way. We bring it to policy, we discuss it at policy, we read through it, and then we adopt it in the resolution in January.
Well, that's what we did with the anti-gun resolution, which was the only resolution since we've been on the board. And it was a thorough discussion, which I think was really productive. We all agreed, it was all unanimous. And I would like to do that again on something that is as important as this.
I don't understand. I'll be honest with you. I'm trying to be as conciliatory as possible, and I've proved it in the past that my opinions can change based upon new information. But if this is a good thing, and we all agree it's a good thing, why not do it now and then do the celebration in January? At least we make a statement that we all agree in good government.
Well, I absolutely agree in good government. I don't think anyone has any problem with the content of the resolution. I would be happy to subscribe to the principles at any time. I don't think I need a resolution telling me how, you know, how I should behave as a board member. And I don't think I need a resolution to tell me what my responsibilities are. I mean, I certainly subscribe to the principles enunciated, and I'm happy to live by them now. I'm happy to live by them in a week. I'm happy to live by them in January. You know, that's, I think, essential to being a member of the board. I also think that, you know, this is the kind of resolution where you want to have discussion about it. You want everybody buying in because it is so important. And I think to introduce it at a board meeting to amend the agenda and put it in there isn't the right way to do it. Because I think it would be far more effective to bring it up at a policy committee meeting, to talk about it, and to thoroughly come to consensus, and then, you know, and then move forward. Because I think that that's really what these, you know, at heart, that's what these principles are about. They're about doing things the right way. They're about coming together. They're about working together in the right way, in a constructive way. And I think we should do that. And I think we should do it right. And I think we should do it so it has meaning, not as a stunt at the end of an agenda.
One of my concerns is, it was brought up at the policy meeting, but then there was no discussion. And Felix, you said this is going to happen at the January meeting. So there was already a plan. So I don't know when that plan was made. And it certainly wasn't discussed with all the board members.
We discussed this at a, real quick, Sue. Sorry, I wanted to answer Rosemary's question. We discussed this previously in July when they came up for whether we're going to move forward on a policy or whether we're going to move forward on a resolution. Previously, okay. So it was talked about previously. And working with the chair and Dr. Christian, we talked about a couple of different ideas on how to execute this. And I think we came up with a consensus that-
It will be on the agenda. It can be on next month's agenda. But I just feel like it needs more discussion rather than doing it tonight.
Well, as part of my motion, I would like to just read the headings of what the principles of government and leadership are as per PSBA.
And we've all received these in our emails from PSBA.
We have all. They are: Abdicate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern effectively, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, and act ethically. And as I've said, and I'll say it one last time, and then I do have a motion on the floor with a second, I believe we can do this this evening, and we can do it again in a more celebratory fashion in January. But I think it's important that we make it clear that we all agree with these principles this evening.
Well, one of them is plan thoughtfully. And I don't think putting it on tonight would be planning thoughtfully.
And I think we do all agree with the principles. I think everybody has said, who has talked, that they agree with the principles. And they, it's just a matter of how we adopt them and the method in which we adopt them. But I think everybody has said they absolutely agree with the principles and abide by the principles. And I don't see, I haven't heard anyone express any opposition to anything in the principles. It's just that, you know, I think it would be, it would behoove us as a board to have a fuller discussion of the principles. And I think that would be a helpful thing to do before just adopting them. I think they need to mean something, and to mean something, you talk about them. And, you know, you have a fulsome discussion about them. You don't just adopt it.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree with the principles. And I think frankly, you know, some of the things in here get exactly at some of the issues that this board has had. Among the sub-bullets for act ethically are abide by the majority decision. Among the fiscal responsibility, it's, you know, spending money wisely, and we've had some budget challenges. So talking through all these issues as a board is not inappropriate and is not obstructive. It is the right thing to do. And I think everybody agrees with these principles. So we can choose to make this, you know, unpleasant, but that's a choice that people are making. It doesn't have to be. I don't- That we agree that everyone agrees with the principles. We will talk about it at the policy committee next month, and it can be formally adopted in January with all the hoopla, and it still gets everybody the result that they want.
Well, given the fact that this board has introduced as an add to our agenda, going out for an RFP for a solicitor, going out for an RFP for an architect without any conversation beforehand, I don't see why this is such a big deal. And this is huge in terms of confidence from the public. And I think you're correct, and there's no reason why we can't all make a decision on this. And if it's, if we don't agree and the board votes it down, so be it.
So on that note, I agree that, and I think there's a consensus that we all want to adopt these, and we want to do it the proper way. I have to agree with Jen that bringing it to policy committee, having a discussion there is the correct way to do it. To bring it up tonight like this is not doing it justice. So on that note, I'm going to make a motion to table this till January.
There's already a motion on the floor. Vote on it.
In motion, I mean, there's a motion to table the motion. There has to be a second for that motion.
A second.
All right, so there's no debate on a motion to table, so we will vote on the motion to table this motion for the resolution until January.
Can I comment on the motion?
No.
Okay. I'll say that, sorry.
Roll call. Roll call, Dave.
It's a motion to table the motion for the PSB resolution. So if you vote yes, you're voting to not consider it tonight.
Mrs. Dow?
Yes, I'd like to table it.
Mrs. Northcutt? Mrs. Moore? Mr. Brodsky? Mr. Shupack?
Yes.
Mrs. Paduzzi?
No.
Mrs. Franklin Becker?
Yes.
Mrs. Feingold?
Yes.
Mr. Raimondo?
Yes.
All right. Any other new business?
Yeah, I just want to say that there have been PSBA resolutions that have come to us that they send us an email. And as the PSBA liaison, I know Eunice has gotten these as well, where it says, "We're encouraging school boards to pass resolutions in support of such and such legislation," or this, that, and the other. That is not something that has ever been brought to a policy committee meeting. It is something that is just generally discussed quickly and moved on. So I just want to make sure that nobody in the public thinks that we're trying to push anything through and avoid, it's a resolution. It doesn't necessarily need to go through the policy committee to get to this point. So if it was going to be on the January agenda, it wouldn't have gone to the policy committee. I promise you that.
Just for correction, when those come through for specifically a Senate bill or a House bill, they do get talked about at the various committees. And we haven't had one at policy because policy is new this year.
No, but we passed a resolution earlier this year. PSBA requested, and it did not come to policy. I'll bring my notes at the next meeting and confirm the dates and the topic.
Moving forward, solicitors report?
There's no solicitors report.
Committee reports. Intermediate unit.
Yes, yes. I have one. The board of directors of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met on September 26th in Norristown. I just want to mention a couple of things briefly about that meeting. We were adding an additional three classrooms for emotional support in our Early Learning Academy building, which is the old MCIU building on DeKalb Pike. This is in response to many requests for support for preschool children with mental health issues. health issues. Additionally, we are awaiting a state grant to address between 80 and 90 elementary school students in our county who are on a waiting list for mental health support. That's a new, large number that we never anticipated. This grant will help us to reach these children in their home school districts. It won't just be at the MCIU, it's going to be support clinicians who go to different school districts. Secondly, through an agreement with the developer, our IU is offering a software called Social, I'm sorry, yeah, Social Sentinel. It scans public social media posts for bullying language or threats within our school district. We are offering, are you familiar with this?
We signed up for it.
We said, I was going to tell you. We're offering the software at a significant discount for Montgomery County schools, which is, it's significant, it's less than half than what the software developer is offering. And many have already purchased an initial one-year trial lease, and we're going to use it, and I think it's a very good thing. I'm glad we're doing it. Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yes, we discussed this at a community relations meeting earlier this year. We are utilizing the software, it does not, we are not sharing any student data whatsoever, it only reviews public posts. I can tell you that the first one I received as an alert, I get it, Mr. Bogley gets it, Mr. McDonald gets it, and Mr. Sherman gets them. The first one I received was somebody who was bird watching, and he talked about the great shots he got with his camera. So that's not to make fun of it, that's just to explain, it's a piece of software that analyzes language. So it doesn't see images, and it just is public posts. So it's important to realize that, and that's why we're piloting it, but the reality is, if it, if it prevents one tragedy, it's well worth it. So I'm happy to report thus far, any notifications that we get have not been threatening whatsoever, they've been innocuous. But, you know, Tim, Tim is on it, you know, if somebody could post something at midnight and I get an email, no concerns here, Dr. Christian and I reply back, so it's just one more layer.
There is one school district within the county, I'm not going to mention which one it is, because it's executive session, but a student was, a credible threat was made, and that student has been dealt with through authorities in our county, and the representative I talked to from the school was very happy with this Social Sentinel. So it worked for that school district, and maybe it saved lives there.
And given that we're talking about safety and security issues, I do think it's important, Dr. Christian, that we remind people about the Safe Schools Night. I know one of our student representatives already mentioned it, but I don't know if you wanted to just say something briefly, so that people know, you know, we really want people to come to that event on Thursday night.
Absolutely, our kids did mention it, and we've advertised through Connect Ed on the website. We have several guest speakers and several breakout sessions planned for this Thursday starting at 7:00 PM. Proactive approach to providing a safe environment for our schools. I can tell you that all principals, all department heads, when we begin the year and we talk about goal setting, one of our overarching themes is first to provide a safe and caring environment. Students have to feel safe and cared for before we can even talk about student achievement, which is obviously critical as well. So we're looking forward this evening, we have about 100 people pre-registered, you do not need to be pre-registered to attend, it would just help us with handouts for our guest speakers. We have a speaker on cyberbullying, we have our architects coming, talking about designing safe schools. Steve Beck from Montgomery County is going to be our keynote speaker. We also have our three local police departments that will be represented. And we also have members of our Student Assistance Program that will be talking about how students, the resources we have available for students who could be experiencing stress or anxiety and have possible mental health needs. There's a very real possibility, there could be more questions than answers by the end of it. There'll be an opportunity for folks that attend to submit questions to us as an exit ticket, so we can plan future nights. This is a community endeavor. And the districts where I've worked, safety is, obviously you have the nuts and bolts of things that you do to make your school safe, but it's also an atmosphere where kids feel safe and parents feel safe sending their kids to school.
...of the IU.
Finance?
The finance committee met earlier this month, and a couple of things just to highlight. One of the things we discussed was the budget calendar for the, for the upcoming budget year, the 2019-20 budget year. Thank you to Mr. Sobrowski for putting that together, it's very detailed, and I think it'll keep us all on track as we, as we look forward to putting together the new budget. We also, a brief update, as I think everyone knows, we are planning construction of a new middle school, and as part of that, we, we have to go to the market to raise, raise the money through bonds. In early October, we, you know, we had a rating on the first set of bonds, correct? From Moody's Investor, Investor Service, and, and they maintained our AAA rating. And they noted, which I believe is the highest there is, am I right in the fact?
That is correct.
Yes. And they noted among the positive aspects of the district, you know, our strong reserves, conservative budgeting, a willingness to increase the district's property tax levy, our large tax base, and, and growing economy. So a lot of positives for the district, a lot of positives, I think, about our community as well, and I think that AAA rating speaks not only to the work the administration has done, and the board has done, but also to, to our community, and our community's support for, for its public schools and support for public education. And so we, you know, we thank you because that really, that AAA rating is really a reflection, I think, on the entire community here. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. HR, Mel?
No HR report. However, Tech School report.
Go ahead, continue.
I was out at the Tech School today to look at the greenhouse, and we are only days away now from opening. And the numbers have leveled out at the Tech School, and I'm really glad to say, the enrollment now is around 735. And when I first came on the board, I think it was 505, so that's really impressive. And we are about to offer two brand-new programs to all the seven districts, which I really can't talk about yet because we don't have the state approvals, but I'll have them probably by December. And that's also very exciting. That's my report.
Excellent, I would agree with Mel, they're doing an amazing job up there. And it's just a lot of energy, there's a lot of positive energy coming out of that building, so it's, it's great to see. Thanks, Mel.
I can just comment, I work with Seth in Chester County, and we've had some very good dialogues with the, during the superintendent's meetings at the school, and he has some fresh ideas that I think are being well-received.
Can, I'm going to add to that, that I've been in discussion with Dr. Christian and Seth Stram about having a meeting up there. So in the near future, we're trying to get logistics down, but we would like to have a meeting.
That's great.
Whether it would be a curriculum or another opportunity, we're posting around a couple of different ideas, so that's into work, so I'll just throw that out there. Thanks. All right, curriculum.
Yes, curriculum. Okay, our curriculum committee met last Monday, October 15th, in this meeting room, and we were privileged to have all of our district's curriculum supervisors, building principals and vice principals at the meeting to present and discuss our students' annual achievement summary. This meeting, as are all of our curriculum meetings, are open to the public, we encourage you to come. In small groups for optional review of a great deal of information that night, we poured over PSSA data, which indicated points of pride regarding our test scores for each school, as well as areas of focus for the future, and strategies to improve learning if there was any deficiency noted. Overall, K through 12, we rank consistently higher than the state or federal averages, is very good, sometimes significantly higher. We also looked at data in the population of historically underperforming students in an effort to support all of our students to achieve his or her highest potential. It was a very ambitious and impressive presentation, thank you, Dr. McKenney, it was amazing. However, our district looks beyond PSSA scores to local benchmarks, national scores, SAT and ACT, and other metrics specifically tied to our curriculum. It's not just the PSSA scores we're concerned with, you know, that's just a one shot, one day of kids taking a test, that does not reflect all their learning. The real takeaway here is that the focus of our district's improvement efforts is a dynamic amalgam of several objectives. Mastery of core academics, critical thinking and problem-solving, competencies in collaboration, and effective communication, and what I believe to be a very important self-management competency is learning how to learn, it's sort of a take on lifelong learners. So our next curriculum committee meeting will be on November 12th in this room at 5:00 PM, and there will be a prize, the comprehensive plan for our district required by PDA every three years. It'll be another very informative meeting, so I encourage you to come. And Dr. McKenney and our committee have been working for months toward this, and it'll be submitted to PDA before the end of the year, is that correct? Very important document for us. Thank you, that concludes our report.
Eunice, FMT.
Facilities Management and Transportation Committee met on October 1st. We had some updates on the renovations and the final touches going on at PW, and just about everything was completed at that point, including some of the items at the West Gym. We had a wonderful ribbon cutting at the West Gym this evening, and we know that students are in there and enjoying the gorgeous facility, and so it's wonderful, and congratulations to everybody who was involved in this project, because it's just fantastic, and fantastic that our students get, and our community gets to take advantage of such a wonderful facility. We also had a discussion with respect to the roof leaks in this building, in that entry corridor, with some of the rain that we had earlier this fall, there were some significant leaks, and so Dr. Christian and Mr. Yem and the team are working with companies to arrange for appropriate repairs. I don't know if you have any additional updates since the meeting that we had, Dr. Christian?
We're still waiting for Garland to give us the report, but it'll include a short-term plan for some of the immediate needs, and then a long-term plan for capital projects for the board to consider.
So some work to do there, but they have an excellent handle on, on the challenges that, and what we need to do to fix that. We also then had a very extensive presentation on the new middle school, we had an overview from KCBA Architects. All of those slides are available on our website, there's a whole section where you can look at the plans and some of the conceptual drawings. It's important to note that what is represented there is the wish list, it's the, here's everything we'd like to have, and that comes from the administration and the staff who work in our building saying, here's everything that we would possibly want. We're going to have to look at that with the administration and the construction management firm and say, here's what we want, here's what we can afford, and determine where we need to be. And so those conversations will go on over the next month or two to get us to a working budget. That, you know, compromises will have to be made to determine how we extract the most value and make sure that we have the right-size program for our district both now and for the next 50 years. We're making a 50-year investment with this new building at least. And then we also talked about the options, and there are many for the access road that would potentially be shared with Plymouth Township to address some of the traffic issues, and that's, that's really everything we talked about. And again, I encourage you to go to the website because you can see all of the conceptual stuff, there will be community meetings to talk about this in more detail, and you can always attend our facilities management meetings, which are open to the public, to ask questions and give your input.
All right, thank you, Eunice. Community Relations, Rosemary?
We didn't have a meeting this month, but as a reminder, in addition to the Safe Schools Night this coming Thursday, just a reminder to everyone about the October 30th Colonial Community Coffee Hour, and the theme will be Mental Health Supports in the District. And another very important reminder, because this will happen before the next public board meeting, on November 7th, Plymouth White Marsh is going to be hosting in the cafeteria the Intermediate Unit's Resource Expo, and this is for families and students with special needs moving beyond high school. There's going to be representatives from colleges, technical programs, advocacy groups, employment supports, community resources, financial planners, leisure groups, so many more things. There's going to be at least 50 vendors on hand to discuss supports for students with disabilities, their families, and educators. All Montgomery County school districts have been invited to this, and it's November 7th from 6:30 to 8:30 in the Plymouth White Marsh High School cafeteria.
Thank you, Rosemary, Legislative?
The Legislative Committee did not meet this month. I will say that Mrs. Dow and Mrs. Paduzzi, and I believe Dr. Christian, all attended the PSBA conference last week. I don't know if there's any highlights that you all would like to share from your experience there.
I ate chocolate, and maybe a chocolate martini. The best part of the PSBA conference, and I've gone for, I guess, this is my third year, is just talking to other school board directors and other superintendents from other districts, you know, seeing what they do well, them talking about what we do well, or what, where we can learn. So I loved that, and also just having an opportunity to listen to people who are experts in certain fields teach me, right? Teach me, I'm going to share some information with some of you. The beauty of it is, is now that, you know, I've gone for a couple of years, I know that there are certain sessions I don't need to go to, I'm talking to Dr. Christian about this, I don't need to know how to do that. That's more for the superintendents than, than the certain people going to. So I've learned of which sessions to go to, and I just feel like I learned so much about, there was a lot of things about policy, and there was things about, there was a transgender session about how to deal with different things with that, and I just really enjoyed myself. There was a speaker at the end of the entire conference that was the father of Rachel from Columbine shooting, and he really had a wonderful message to share, and I left feeling enthused and excited and happy to be a member of the school board. Randomly, there was a session, this is sort of a legislative update as well, there was a session on starting school times later. The reason I bring that up is I know that there's a group of parents who have been chit-chatting around on social media, as well as live, about wanting to learn more about that. Senate Resolution 417 passed, and it creates a committee to study, to do a study on the benefits of having our older students start later. So the good thing is, is we don't have to waste any of our resources or spend any of our time doing that kind of research. The State Commission will do that for us, and then we can look at it and obviously make whatever decision we feel is best, but just so that parents know that the state's doing something good, that we can benefit from, from their work. But that's all. I love the conference, thank you to the board for approving us to be able to go. I should have brought you all some Hershey kisses, I apologize that I didn't.
And it was my first time going, and I loved, and my favorite part was the, were the keynote speakers, because it was just so informative, and it gives you a way to look at things that you haven't looked at that way before. I went to that class on the timing, and Radner actually is a big proponent of that, so they're doing a lot of the work that we might not have to do, and they're really close to us. And I also went to the transgender class, and that was very refreshing to see people from all over the state that want to address this issue, and it just was, again, that was really informative.
Just to note, this coming spring, NSBA is in Philadelphia, and so what a great opportunity. It's never easy for the board, since this is your volunteer job, to make time to go to training and conferences and those types of things. Certainly appreciate everybody and all that you do, but what a great opportunity, since it's local this year, to send the team down and hear the speakers, it's generally an outstanding conference, so it's great that it's in Philly this year. It's in the spring, I'll send the dates to the board, it's usually April.
In Contra Hockin, everyone is invited to attend the Fellowship House Pumpkin Party. It's a free event, all supplies will be included, it's this Saturday from 12 to 2. Dress up in the Halloween costume for children and adults to win a prize and participate in the fun, and there'll be a raffle prize given away at the end of that event. So that's 12 to 2. So that's 12 to 2. And then between 3 and 3:45, you can register for the annual Halloween Parade at the Number Two Fire Company at Eighth and Fayette. The parade begins at 4:00 and will march along Fayette Street, going down to Washi Fire Company Number One down at 36 West Elm. There'll be refreshments and prizes, prizes for the top three best costumes for each age group and category. And new this year, there is the dog category, so pets can be dressed up and marched down Fayette Street.
And for Plymouth, Wednesday, November 14th at 2:00 PM, Plymouth is having a Veterans Recognition Ceremony held at the Plymouth Township Service and Devotion Monument. There will be a guest speaker and light refreshments. And on Wednesday, November 28th at 6:00 PM, Plymouth is having their Second Annual Patriotic Tree Lighting. Last year was very successful. There will be a mini-concert and hot chocolate and cookies, and this year, members of Villanova's baseball team and a Boy Scout troop will be on hand to help with the festivities.
Very good. White Marsh? No, okay. Policy. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Policy Committee.
During the October 15th Policy Meeting, we discussed the possibility of adding a new policy to address the unique issues facing transgender students. This transgender policy is intended to give support for our students who show their gender identity differently than other students. This policy will also give the families of these students a sense of compassion and understanding, and give them the knowledge that their child is being accepted and appreciated. Although it may be difficult conversation for some people to have, it is imperative that we, as a district, show respect to every student and provide a safe, healthy environment where they can flourish into happy, successful adults. Furthermore, there are far-reaching effects that are not included in the wording of this policy. This policy gives validation to all students who have been bullied, whether they are trans, gay, straight, or have felt marginalized in any way during their school years. The passing of this policy will show that Colonial School District is a place where all students are respected, regardless of society's traditional box they do or do not fit into. The board, along with our superintendent and the administration, will be having extensive discussion on the best way to go about implementing a policy such as this. And not only welcome your feedback tonight, I encourage you to come to our next policy meeting on Monday, November 12th, and ask any questions you may have about this important issue.
And if I may, you know, I'd just like to thank Ms. Dow and Mr. Armando and Ms. Feingold for their leadership in having the board take up a policy protecting transgender students. Some months ago, before this policy was introduced or considered, five of us received correspondence urging the board to reject any efforts to protect our transgender students. The letter accused schools of seeking to make kids transgender, appying that transgender students are really just suffering from mental illness, and decried what the writer described as the quote-unquote "trans trend." Apparently, in the writer's view, transgender kids don't really exist. They are just part of a hip new trend, like fitness trackers or farmers' markets. Of course, the writer deliberately ignores that these so-called trendsetters face overwhelming levels of bullying, harassment, and physical violence, that in surveys, 75% of transgender students report feeling unsafe in their schools, and that 41% of transgender people will attempt suicide in their lifetimes. The writer is also willfully ignorant that the exact same arguments he or she makes to justify discrimination against transgender students were used to justify discrimination against gay and lesbian students in the past. I thought of this letter over the weekend, and I raise it here, when it was reported that the Trump administration is seeking to define transgender individuals out of existence. People who are neighbors, friends, family members, coworkers, people who call this district home. The Trump administration, just like the writer of the anonymous letter that we received, seems to think that if you just pretend they don't exist, our transgender friends, neighbors, and students will be forced back into the closet to a life in the shadows on the margins of society. Let's be clear, that is the goal here. To deny transgender individuals their rights, to justify discrimination, to say that our transgender friends and neighbors have no place in our society, that's not the colonial way. It's not our community's way. Now more than ever, I think we must stand up for the values of our community and protect the rights of all students to live their authentic lives, free from bullying, from discrimination, and from fear. As leaders, we must send a strong signal that in our community, in our schools, we accept and cherish the differences that have always made this country great. Standing up for the rights of transgender students to attend public school free of discrimination and hatred is not a slippery slope to unceasing demands from other groups for similar protections. It is rather an essential step on the climb to a more just society, to the mountaintop envisioned by Dr. King. We may not reach the mountaintop, but we can do our part to affirm to our transgender students that we value them, that they exist, and that in our schools, they can be themselves and achieve their full potential. As we debate and deliberate on this policy over the coming weeks, hopefully with lots of community engagement and feedback, let us remember that the policy is not about those of us sitting up here. Rather, we must keep our focus on the goals at the heart of this policy, protecting our students, accepting them for who they are, and supporting them through the obstacles and challenges they face along the way. If we are unwilling to do that, who will? And if we won't act now, when will we? Thank you.
Adam, how did you get this letter?
The letter was sent to the district, addressed to some of us on the board.
Just to some?
Not everyone, just to some.
But the rest of the board was never told about this?
The letter came to us. It was addressed to some of us on the board, and it was, you know, it was not a great letter.
Well, I'm concerned that I never knew about this letter.
No, thank you. But, you know, the concern here is really that, you know, what we're trying to do and the focus on the policy that we're trying to enact.
Mary, one reason is, we didn't want it to become bigger than it should be. And we didn't, or at least I didn't want to give it traction. So I figured not to advertise it for other people to jump on that bandwagon. I mean, it was anonymous, so they kind of lost their respectability.
I understand that, and I agree with you that you don't want to give it more credence than it deserves. However, I do agree with Rosemary that the board, the rest of the board should have been told about it. The rest of the board can be trusted to keep things like that confidential, and we have to keep in mind that this is a board of nine.
Well, my question is, how did they know? Because this was a while ago, before we ever even said we were going to be doing any transgender policy. So that's always, I've wondered that, too.
Yeah, moving forward. We'll leave it at that. All right. For any information included in this report, the school activity accounts, athletic activity account, building report, technology report, and curriculum instruction and assessment report. All right, we go on to closing items. Is there any public comments for tonight?
Hi, I'm Beth Petrino from White Marsh Township. I left my house tonight dressed like this, thinking, I'm not standing up, I'm not going to say a word, and yet I sat here and once again listened to what went on, and I just can't help myself. I mean, the fact that right here, we just had five board members knowing about something that went on, and feeling that they couldn't talk to their fellow board members about it, but yet won't pass the resolution and stand up here and pass the PSBA motion saying that you support communication, that you support working together ethically. I mean, I'm speechless, like, I'm shaking.
Beth.
And, no, excuse me, please don't interrupt me.
Sure thing.
I have so much, it is. And, you know, I got something in the mail from my, I'm a Democrat, from my fellow Democrats saying all the things that the school board is doing on behalf of the Democratic Party. And it was laughable, because it's not true. Respectfully disagreeing is what I have heard pretty much every single month for the last 10 months. And you sit up here and you say it to Dr. Christian, you say it to your fellow board members, you say it to members of the public. Well, we are respectfully disagreeing. It's an embarrassment. And then to say you don't trust your fellow board members with something, and that yet a resolution has to go through policy and has to be talked about and well-thought-out, when we have sat here, month after month, and members of the public and members of the board have been blindsided. And yet you talk about integrity, you talk about doing what's right for the community. Seems to me you're serving a different agenda, and it's not one that you should be proud of.
Well, I'd just like to say, I, you know, with all due respect to Ms. Petrino, and I appreciate your comments, that, I mean, I just talked about one of the things that I'm doing and one of the pieces of the agenda that I'm serving, which is to protect our kids, and I would hope that everyone in our community would be behind that effort.
And we absolutely are about our kids and about protecting them, but we're also about open, being open, being honest, and not just sitting up here. And, I mean, a resolution, that was so easy for you guys to do. And yet, there is this split, and you summarize every time someone says something, and you say, oh, you understand and you hear what we're saying. It doesn't seem like it. It doesn't seem like it. It doesn't seem like you're here for the kids. It doesn't seem like you're here for the taxpayers. It really doesn't. There was something really simple you guys could have done tonight to show good faith, and you're going to do it in January, and that's great. It would have gone a long way to do it tonight, especially before saying that you kept things from your fellow board members.
Erin Salino, Plymouth Township. So I'm a little late. I was watching you guys on CITV, and I had to wait until I, my husband got home so I could come over. And literally, I was watching it, and I was kind of blown away. So the resolution, which I think would be a great thing, it's not just symbolic, it actually is more than that, and it, I feel like there has been a huge discord between the board and the public, speaking to someone from the public, and I think it would have been a very nice gesture, if not an intent of the board, to go forward. But the one thing that really annoyed me, and I literally was sitting at home, watching this, and I was going to, you know, put the kids' bed, headbed myself, I put my jacket on, and I didn't change. I literally came here, rushed here for public comment, because Ms. Dow said that that agenda item, Ms. Moore wanted to add, wasn't thoughtfully planned. And all I could think was, December 2017, the item that was added without prior knowledge of the other members in the board to fire the previous solicitor was not thoughtfully planned. And I thought that was incredibly hypocritical, so much so that I started to literally come over here from putting my kids to bed as soon as my husband walked in the door. And that's really sad. And unfortunately, I missed the letter about the transgender policy, and I am fully for every policy you guys are talking about with nondiscrimination. I think we need to be totally inclusive, but that means inclusive of your board members as well. That's also hypocritical, if you can't include someone on something as so simple to understand as we want to be an inclusive community, we want to value people's opinions. And whether somebody addressed a letter to three of you, four of you, five of you, if it's that important to read it, this board meeting, it should have said a simple forward to the rest of the board. That's called respect. And if you want to claim that we're going to be a respectful, inclusive community, you need to walk the talk. You need to do it. Otherwise, it means nothing. So think about that. And also, I heard Ms. North cut earlier asking about something that was going to be added to, she was talking to you, Felix, and I'm totally like him right now, but it was during a policy committee, they were talking about adding this to the January agenda. Now, I feel like she should have been included in those conversations. She obviously felt she wasn't. And that's another thing, that this is a simple thing of respect to include people, because what you do reflects on the whole community. And I've been up here time and time again, and I felt disrespected. But I also, I keep coming back, and I obviously don't feel that disrespected, and I don't feel like I can't speak here, because I do. But you need to realize that there's people watching, people like me who actually are sitting at home, watching on a really bad TV, like, I've got to tell you, it's not a very flattering look for anybody. I'm sorry. But it's, I literally rushed over here instead of getting my kids and going to bed. So just something to keep in mind, there's everybody, there's a ton of people watching. And when you watch it on YouTube, there's more people watching. And unfortunately, I think there were some meetings that were cut off. I'm sorry, whoever does that. One of the last committee meetings, I went to go listen to it on YouTube, and I don't know if it was not posted or what happened, but I do go back and listen, because I can't make it to all the meetings. And there's a lot of other people, and you want to be transparent, you have to be consistently transparent, not just selectively transparent. So, thank you.
Chris Epstein, White Marsh Township. And I, too, am shaking. Since it was brought up tonight about the principles for government, governance, and leadership, I thought, well, I'll take a look at it while I'm sitting here. And the fact that some of you got that letter, which personally angered me, that letter, the first thing I would have done is send it to the rest of the board to make sure that everybody got it, because they all feel the same way in terms of the writing of that letter, and that was very unfair. But under the principles of governance and leadership, which you refused to talk about tonight, is a section called Lead Responsibly. And in that, it says, "Work together in a spirit of harmony, respect, and cooperation, and collaborate with the superintendent as the team of 10." That was definitely not happening here tonight, and that is really disappointing and disgusting to see that. That's the first thing I want to say, and that's all I'm going to say about that right now. But I wanted to go back to the facilities report, and I just want to make sure I understood correctly. In the meeting, which wasn't mentioned in your report, but you did talk about costs and things like that, but the construction management firm mentioned that costs have increased over $3.1 million based on the plans they have since they started the architecture on this, and that was not mentioned in your report. And the other thing, we've talked about finance and facilities, that we have the AAA bond rating, and that you're going out to bond for this project. You have agreed, if I understand correctly, to borrow up to $85 million for this project and some other things, saying that that was, you know, just a number. But do we yet have a cap on the cost of that building? Because I know at that meeting, the facilities meeting last month, it was asked, can we come up with a budget cap so that we know and we can be responsible with our fiscal dollars? And as far as I know, we don't have a cap. We have, you know, one hand is saying, let's go out and borrow up to $85 million, one hand is saying, oh, look at these beautiful plans, and looking at what the construction management is saying, with the cost going up to $68,788,033 based on last month's numbers that he calculated. We need, as the public, to really get a handle on this, and we're not getting anywhere. The same questions are being asked over and over and over at these meetings. We don't have a cap, we don't have a budget, and it's very frustrating as a taxpayer.
We do, we had a lengthy discussion, Mrs. Epstein, at the FMT last month, and we will have further discussion with KCBA. They went back and are refining elements of the building, as Mrs. Franklin Becker said, and so there absolutely will be a cap on the building. So, but we had many questions for KCBA to answer. One of our key things was is to maximize instructional space. They have some wonderful spaces in there, but I want to make sure Mr. Phaler does, too, and the faculty does, too, make sure that we're getting the most utility out of those spaces. So we actually, the middle school administration surveyed the middle school staff about some of the more open spaces that exist, and which of those spaces would get used. So you'll see a refined presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
I met with them as recently as last week, with Mr. Phaler, and we reviewed some revised plans, but, and we'll be sharing all of that with the board. And we do have information up on the website, and I'm certainly available, you know, you can give me a call anytime to talk about the project.
And Dr. Christian.
And the last thing I want to say about these principles of governance and leadership, you want to wait, some of you want to wait until January, I'm just going to implore you right now to start at least practicing some of the things on that list. You can at least practice working together as a board, so that in January, you really mean what you're saying.
Sure. I just wanted to ask Dr. Christian one other thing. Now that the, my understanding, now that we have the construction manager engaged on the middle school project as well, is part of what will happen, is the board will be presented with varying options, you know, and cost scenarios associated with them, so that we understand when we're deciding on sort of a cap, what, what that actually means in terms of the, the physical plant of the building that we're talking about.
That's correct.
Just add to that, too, that I think we've been communicating very aggressively with KCBA, construction manager, in concert with Dr. Christian, about keeping the cost to a goal. We didn't set a hard cap, but we definitely communicated a goal. And we are far, we are early in the project at this point, there's a lot of things that have to get redefined, and some, some things are going to change as the project moves forward. So, I think, as a board, we've been very mindful of every dollar we're going to potentially be spending there.
Beth Satchelin, White Marsh Township. First of all, I want to say to the student reps, great job, and I love that you're talking about all other schools, because we used to see that, and I think it's great, so, good job. Just one quick comment. Mr. Schupack, I, I didn't miss any meetings for eight years, and I'm embarrassed to say that I don't get to make a lot anymore. But, this is the third or fourth meeting that I've been to, and in that time, I think this is the third time, sorry, that I've heard you specifically reference Donald Trump or his administration. And I am, you know, however anybody thinks politically, I would just like to point out, and I have a little experience of this, having been on the board for eight years, and when I came on the board, we had, you know, we had, I guess, when we came on, five Democrats and four Republicans, I'm a Democrat. We all worked together. And it was a little weird when we came on, but we all worked together. And, I just, I want to remind, and I'm speaking to you specifically, because you're the only one I've heard mention it, but I would like to remind all of you that you represent an entire community of, you know, Plymouth, White Marsh, and Concha Hockin. And you have, in the high school, a Republican club, you have a Democrat club. You have a lot of kids whose parents think the president is doing a great job. And you have a lot of people who may think differently, and you got a lot of folks in between. And to sit there and grill a resident on who their political donations are made to, or to sit here tonight and talk about a policy that I strongly support, and I don't know, I mean, anybody who's against it, don't really want to hear from anyway. But, that was great. But to talk about the fact, you know, about Donald Trump's administration, or what's going on, I feel like you're using a platform that should be completely nonpartisan, and should be completely focused on children, and what's best for children, and what they're doing. I'm going to, I'm asking you to please consider that, and not use this room, and this building, and your very important position as a political, as a way to, to talk about your, I wasn't planning on getting up here, I'm sorry, as a way to talk about how you politically believe. Certainly, you're entitled to that, we're all entitled to that. This is not the forum for it, and kids and parents and this entire community are all allowed to have their own opinions, and please don't use this in that way. Thank you. That's, that's all.
I appreciate the, the feedback, and let me just say that I, you know, obviously have no issue. People can vote the way they want to vote, support the issues that they, you know, and the people they want to support for office. And that's not why I'm, I raised it. I raised it because it was, it is a policy that has been announced, and I feel like part of my responsibility is, when I see a policy that I disagree with, and I think will negatively impact on our schools, our students, and our school community, I have an obligation to speak out. If it was coming from a Democrat, Republican, Independent, it doesn't matter. If it's a policy that's not good, in my opinion, for the, you know, for the, for the, for our schools and our students, then I'm going to speak out and say something about it. That's all.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Ford, I live in White Marsh. And last Monday, I spoke to the policy committee about the need to have a policy to support transgender and gender expansive kids, students in the colonial schools. I offered a number of statistics to show the unique challenges that transgender and gender expansive kids face in schools. I told you that in Pennsylvania, 77% of those who are out or perceived as transgender at some point between kindergarten and grade 12, experience some form of mistreatment, such as being verbally harassed, prohibited from dressing according to their gender identity, disciplined more harshly, or physically or sexually assaulted because people thought they were transgender. 55% of those who are out or perceived as transgender in K through 12 were verbally harassed. 26% were physically attacked. And 11% were sexually assaulted in K through 12 because of being transgender. 12% faced such severe mistreatment as a transgender person that they left a K through 12 school. And even unlike their LG, other LGBT students, transgender students consistently reported higher levels of harassment and assault, were less likely to feel a part of their school community, and had poorer educational outcomes. After I gave these numbers, I was disappointed to hear some board members express the view that transgender and gender expansive students should not have their own policy to address their unique challenges and needs. Some board members suggested that, if transgender and gender expansive students have their own policy, then you need a policy for every group. Let's be clear. If you say transgender students should not have their own policy because other groups don't, what you're really saying, what I hear, is that you would rather do nothing for anyone than something for someone. Do not make this a race to the bottom. And even if you do think every group needs a policy to address their own unique needs, the policy for transgender students is before you right now. Don't miss your chance to help one group. The need to act for transgender students is all the more important after this weekend's news, and I'll talk about President Trump, because the United States Department of Health and Human Services issued a memo seeking to define sex on a biological basis for programs under Title IX. The only appeal through this redefinition is genetic testing. The fact remains, the transgender kids just don't have the same protections as other groups. You have the chance to do something for someone. I hope you will.
As this nice woman's coming up to speak, I just want to make sure everybody does understand that one of the policies we just passed today, tonight, on a second read basis, was Board Policy 103. And it's our nondiscrimination policy, and it does include gender, gender identity, it lists all of them. So we are, we are currently protecting all people. I just want to make sure that nobody thinks that we're currently not doing that. Having a new policy or a new resolution about this will enforce it, and that's what we're talking about. But we, we do currently protect them as, as best we can to this point.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vivian Lott, I'm from Plymouth Township. I spoke last week as well. I am here in support of your policy to protect transgender children. I worked for the school district of Philadelphia for 36 years, more than 30, as a counselor in middle school and in high school. During that time, I listened to many, many, many students talk about, these would be gay and lesbian and transgender kids, talk about being bullied, tormented, teased, rejected by their own peers, rejected by school staff, rejected by family members, church, society. They talked about planning to run away, they were kicked out of their homes because they were gay or transgender. And so many talked about, and really contemplated suicide. The devastating effects of discrimination of all kinds, but in particular, discrimination against transgender children is well-known, and it's been well-documented for many years by mental health professionals. But this policy that you are formulating, I believe will protect transgender children, allow them to learn, to grow, to develop into productive and healthy young adults. Transgender students have hopes and dreams and plans, too. What they need and what they want and what they deserve is what we all want, for all our children and our grandchildren. We want safe schools, we want supportive learning environments, we want encouragement and praise for our children, and we want protection from those who would discriminate. I'm grateful to you and your like-minded colleagues on the board for being brave enough and standing up to the current tide in our country that is very divisive and very anti-gay, anti-lesbian, anti-transgender. So, thank you very, very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Renee Bess, and I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. I spoke to you last week also, and I'm here to speak again in favor of your policy to protect transgender students. Sorry, I'm going to read from what I've written, my, I'm a retired teacher, and I think I've memorized one too many class lists, because I have trouble memorizing anymore. The first news that I heard this morning regarding, regarding a consideration of a redefinition of gender, or, that is the first thing I heard. The proposal will define a person's gender as the one identified at birth, which is based upon one's genitalia. This new definition will roll back the recognition and protection of some 1.4 million US citizens, and permit the exclusion of and discrimination against those citizens. Somewhere within that number of 1.4 million are kids, school kids. Let me repeat that. This new definition will legalize the exclusion of and discrimination against a segment of American citizens. Gender, it seems, is a complex system of emotional, psychological, and physical characteristics that result in having an identity that fits one's tendencies and behaviors. I imagine that feeling you've been born with physical and/or emotional characteristics that don't match the things that seem natural for you must be similar to wearing shoes or a coat five sizes too large. Or worse, trying to wear shoes or a coat five sizes too small. Finding the right size must bring such a sense of relief until you discover that no one else is wearing shoes or coats, that you stand out from the crowd when you're wearing your correctly sized clothing. And on top of everything else, you've become a target for abuse now that you've been brave enough to claim your clothing's right size. It's a struggle to come to school, it's extremely hard to concentrate and learn. I'd like to think that most teachers and school administrators possess a natural instinct to respect and protect students who are singled out and abused simply because they are different. But it takes emotional energy, and frankly, guts, to intervene and stop bullies. It takes sensitivity and a willingness to understand the feelings experienced by transgender students when they're under an assault of harassment and microaggressions on a daily basis. A codified policy that will offer emotional support and protection to transgender students will also offer support to the district's teachers and administrative staff when they encounter transgender-related conflicts in the classroom, the cafeteria, the hallways, and on the athletic fields. Dr. Christian, a bit, a little while ago, mentioned the importance of kids feeling safe and cared for in the colonial schools. It is my hope, I'm glad that he said that, and it is my hope that the board members will consider crafting and passing a policy specifically for transgender students, a policy that will respect and protect them in all of our school district. Thank you.
All right, no other public comment, and this meeting's officially adjourned.